All right, let's go ahead and get started. I'd like to welcome everyone here, all those who are in the chamber here with us and all those who are in TV land. I'd like, I've asked Seth Perrins to give us a prayer.
Our Father in Heaven, we begin this council meeting and give thee thanks for this beautiful land in which we live and this beautiful area that we call home. We're grateful for the many people who also live here who create such a wonderful place. And we ask that today as we go about this public business, that we will be guided and directed, that we will be mindful of those whom we represent and whom we serve. That thy hand may be always over the city of Spanish Fork. In this we ask in the name of Jesus Christ, amen.
Okay, I've asked Councilman Mendenhall to please send the pledge allegiance. The audience, please rise, repeat the pledge after me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you. All right, first item is a public comment. If anybody from the public would like to come on, address the mayor and the council, please come on up. Wow. See none? Let's go to council comments. Let's start with Councilman Argal.
Thank you, Mayor. I don't have anything this evening.
Okay. Councilman Gordon.
Mayor, had garbage meetings last week. Continue to work on the sale of our land in Springville as we continue to plan for bringing the new transfer station to Spanish Fork. Not much to report there as it's land transaction and closed session items, but we moved closer in the planning process. Last week, a group of, our committee went to California and Washington and looked at some enclosed transfer station ideas. So we can continue to plan for that. And I think they came back with a lot of good ideas as I'm looking at Chris and getting a head nod. New Era is the group that we're joint with in our landfill out at Baby Landfill. And we have a meeting on Monday where we'll approve our annual budget as their year begins on January 1st. And that's, that's been a great organization that we're a part of as a district. Financials continue to be in line there. Chamber, Heather, would you like to come up and give us sort of what's cooking with the chamber? Lots going on.
Yes, October is really busy. So today, we had a ribbon cutting for Glenrae's Corn Maze. It was amazing. It's definitely someplace you want to take your family. It's just right on the road out to Benjamin. We have the scarecrow contest started today, so we still have a few spots open. So if anybody is a latecomer and they still want to have a scarecrow up, there's still time. The farmer's market is still happening until the end of the month, so the last Saturday will be on the 26th. The food trucks are still scheduled until the end of the month, so they'll run until the 25th unless it really starts dying off and then they'll cancel it. But for now, it's until the 25th. So we have our street fair on Main. It's kind of our craft fair version of the farmer's market. It runs two Saturdays this month, the 5th and the 19th. It runs at the same time as the farmer's market, just across the street at the library park. This Thursday, we have our business of the month for October for My Sister's Closet. So Erin and Sarah Stern own that store and they've been a great contributors to the chamber and the community. So on October 8th, we are having our meet the candidates night. So all of you that are rerunning and anyone else? So we are doing that at the Senior Citizen Center, just right behind here, the city's offices at seven o'clock. We have posted something on our Facebook page. If you have questions that you would like to submit to the candidates, you can get them on there. There's just a quick form you can fill out to submit questions. On the 9th, we have a ribbon cutting for Lyons Pride Insurance here in town. Another one on the 10th for Salem Hills I Care. That one's in Salem, just in that little strip mall up there. On the 16th is our new networking luncheon. We are having Kenny Knight come. He owns Rage Fitness up in Lehigh. He's kind of a motivational speaker as well, so he's coming to speak to us. That will be held at the High Chaparral. On the 23rd, we are doing a South County Business Summit in conjunction with the Springville Mapleton Chamber and the Payson-Santaquin Chamber. It should be really good. We have Brad Barton as our keynote speaker. He's actually lives right here in Spanish Fork and he's an amazing athlete and speaker. So we're excited to have him come as our keynote. So that will be from eight to one at the Nebo School District Boardroom. The 26th is the Trick or Treat on Main. So that one's always fun. Runs from Center Street to Fourth North, plan on about 2,000 kids. So that's always fun. And then the last thing in October, we have our board nominating information meeting. So anyone who is a member of the chamber and would like to run for the board of directors, we have an information meeting just to kind of give you what's all involved and that type of a thing. It's going to be free lunch, so come and find out. We want lots of people involved to help us improve and better the chamber. So that's all I have.
Cool. Thank you, Heather.
Yep.
The, the only other thing that I want to mention that will probably be mentioned later as we, we hear from our contractor on the fire station is tomorrow is our groundbreaking. And so tomorrow at noon, the new site is at 2635 East Canyon Road. And that'll be a big day to, to see that groundbreaking for our new station number 62. That's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilman Mendenhall.
Thank you, Mayor. First, you see in the council chambers, the camera I'm sure has got it, but was lucky enough the other day to be invited up to Reese Elementary School by Principal Gull and the good teachers up there. And, and got to, to stand with them and talk to them a little bit in the gym and get a picture with, with these banners here. I did find one little girl that they said was the worst student in Reese Elementary. I didn't know if you knew that, little Stella.
I'm going to tell Stella you said that about her.
No, that's not true. She's the sweetest.
I thought you were talking about the youth fan behind her picking his nose. Junior, is that, is that any relation to you? Okay, just checking.
So I let the whole third grade know. I said, hey, Stella's dad is on city council with me. So we talk a lot. And they said, we know, we know he's on city council.
Oh, good.
She's let them all know that her dad does that same thing as well. But sure appreciated the third grade making that kind sign there. And then also, the Parks and Rec went up, what was that, the next day, Dale? Or was that, okay. So the next day, the second grade elementary made a good banner for the Parks and Rec to say thank you for, for all the neat things that, that the Parks and Rec do in the city. Those kids up there sure love the availability of all the programs and whatnot. Principal Gull and I talk often about that. And we always let the kids know that, that we grew up in Parks and Rec together as cousins, playing on ball teams together and, and whatnot. And, and they sure seem to eat that up. So good job to Reese Elementary and, and saying thank you to the community. It's really cool to be a part of it. Another picture that I've sent Scott here is, has to do with a little bit of recreation as well. Junior will recognize this young woman here, but the PGA Junior League up at the golf course, Tyler Abaglin, the assistant pro up there, has just been phenomenal for, for years up there, engaging the youth in, in golf and getting, getting them to learn the game better, getting them to play quicker, all aspects of golf that make it enjoyable. The reason why I made Maddie Baker, the granddaughter of Junior Baker, stand here and get this picture is this is one of the more famous holes up at the golf course, hole number 16. And they put their, her and her teammate put the drive down there a little ways. And then she, you could tell she needed to hit this one hard because it's not easy to get it all the way back there. Right, Mayor? Have you ever hit the green here on 16?
No, I've never.
I bet you have.
Well, I have.
Okay.
I've been modest.
Well, from right there, that says 150, but it's a long 150 from that stake. And they were about 60, 70 yards behind that. So they were, they were going to try to hit it pretty hard. She hit it hard. The golf ball hit that stake. And you can see she's holding her hand right above the dent of that stake. So I've never seen a stake hit, first of all, with a golf ball. Shane, you've probably hit it with a golf cart, right? And had to replace it. But hit it with a golf ball and it, you know, it sat 10 yards away from it. So I said, Maddie, you got to get a picture of that. Nobody will ever believe that you dented the stake. And so we got that picture. But again, hats off to Ryan Reese, Tyler Abaglin, Dallin, Nahulu, the whole Parks and Rec Department that has kept that course in beautiful condition. The leaves are just starting to change up there. It, I might be a little biased because I was 12 once playing up there.
Oh, yeah.
And never hit the stake. But that is one of the prettier places of our community. And so go out, enjoy it. See the clubhouse, the expansion there at the clubhouse. The League of Cities and Towns came down to Spanish Fork to do a, the day before, to come and talk to me a little bit about Spanish Fork and kind of highlight us. And I said, come to the golf course and sit under this, under this pergola and just look at the beautiful mountains around you and everything. And they thought it was one of the prettier places they've seen as well. So just wanted to say thank you again, Tyler, the staff up there, keeping a great course and getting the youth involved in a, in a great sport. Besides that, met with the Rotary Club today. We had our, our board meeting, our monthly board meeting, but also had our, our meeting at noon. Got a good slate of really good things happening that we're involved in. We sure appreciate the chamber and the city involving us in the Harvest Moon Hurrah down there to sell some cotton candy for the, for the Rotary. Last week, which was awesome, made about $500 that'll directly go to a global grant initiative with Rotary that Dr. Franzen's wife, Pat, is involved in. That is a really cool story that I'm excited they're going to come here and talk to us more about it in the later months. So really good stuff happening this fall in the community and it's an honor to be a part of it. Thanks, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilman Scopes.
Mayor, just to report, as you know, Harvest Moon Hurrah went off, went off very well. A lot of, lot of support, lot of success. Just want to publicly thank all the volunteers that donated their time, efforts, talents, and materials to the Harvest Moon Hurrah. Lots of great feedback on the music and the, the events that took place, something that people look forward to every year. So again, thank you to all the volunteers, Parks and Rec Department and their support for that, for the Fine Arts Committee. Also, the Utah Lake Commission, we met this, this last month. They continue with the algae bloom, looking at ways to mitigate that, the phragmities, the weeds that are growing up in the water and around the areas. And then looking at the Waukera, oh, trail, Waukera Walk Trail System they have and future growth around, around the lake, all to make it more accessible for all types of recreation, not just boating. So it's the report I have this time.
Great. Councilmember.
I have two things tonight. The first one is our Fiesta Days Committee chose a new co-chair for the next three years. And so I went with Clint and Karen Muehlstein, who was our 2020 Fiesta Days Chairman. And we invited Ron and Allison Nielsen. They live about 1,000 east. Do any of you know them? Ron and Allison Nielsen. They will be our co-chairs for, for 2020 and then they will be our, our chairman in 21. So they were excited and we look forward to working with them. And then I just wanted to report a little news on the library. I was asked by the mayor to sit with him on the library feasibility study. And we're with Director Pam Jackson and that, two full-time employees there at the library, two residents that, who also serve on the library board, volunteer their time there, two full-time employees from the engineering department, and then our city manager and assistant city manager. And we will be working with Blaylock and Partners, just deciding on things such as budget, the entire facility size, parking, and then hiring a contractor. But that's going to take about 18 months, we're kind of guessing, before any construction actually begins. And I, I think I can also report to the residents that the, the church next door to City Hall actually closed last week. So we officially own that land and nothing will be happening on that for about a year as they lease it back from us. So the, the community, the residents really won't see anything happening, but there's a lot going on behind the scenes to get the ball rolling. And that's all I have to report.
Great, thank you. I had the opportunity to go to Washington DC last week, my capacity of a policymaker on the board committee member. Met with all our congressmen. I don't know if you've got Congress Curtis. Met with Curtis. Last year when I went, I gave him some Spanish Fork socks. I told him they need to be hanging in his office. And so I can report that they're still hanging in his office. So there they are. So that was pretty cool. Had a good visit with those guys. Then while I was there, I also had the opportunity to go to, it's the Fallen National Law Enforcement Officers Memorial. And what there, that is, is all the officers who have died in service are etched on the walls around there. And I looked in the, the book there, we have Lawrence Pinrod, his name's on there, and also Corey Ride. And so that's kind of a neat thing that most people don't ever see there when you go to Washington DC. And we just, I just kind of stumbled on it as I was, and it was pretty cool to see that. And the reverence that they give to our officers. And I just want to shout out to all our, our officers that we don't want you on this wall. We want you to be safe. And, but it's something that, that they have, that they honor those officers that have. Also, along with that, UMPA, our agency, they put out a news release with, we have gone in partnerships with S-Power. And we are pleased to announce that we are going to construct a solar farm in Mona. It'll be 80 megawatt on 560 acres. So this is, we have a lot of coal leases are coming up. And this is one way we're going to subsidize those leases that we're going to lose. And we'll have some nice clean, carbon-free solar power. So that's, that's kind of a neat, big event to go with, with our agency, with UMPA. That'll be about an $80 million project when it's all said and done. So we're trying to provide good power for everyone. And then my sweet wife and I were walking on the trail, which we like to do. And we saw this little bird here. So, little hawk. So I'm going to take over Travis's job as a camera guy. So, just so you know, but that was cool. And then about five minutes later, as we were walking, we saw a fox along the trail there. So that was pretty cool. So if you haven't got out and gone on the trails, get out there and do it. It's pretty awesome. And it's good exercise. And, and it's a great, another thing that we have here in Spanish Fork for our citizens to take care of. Okay, let's move on to Spanish Fork 101. Kent, would you like to come up? This is my good friend Kent Millington with UTA.
Thank you, Mayor. My name is Kent Millington. I'm, I sit on the Board of Trustees with UTA. Beth sends her regards. She knew I was coming down here. I represent Utah and Tuilla Counties on the Board. Carlton Christensen represents Salt Lake County. And Beth Holbrook represents Davis, Weber and Boxhilder. Three of us are, are pleased to be in these positions because there's plenty to be done. And let me give you a brief recap of some of the things we have done here and some of the things that we're hoping to do, especially hoping to do here in Spanish Fork. Many of you may be aware that a year ago, we instituted what we called UVX or the Bus Rapid Transit System in Orem and Provo. Last year, we were carrying about 10,000 riders a day. We were quite pleased with that ridership. We thought that because most of the riders were either BYU or UVU students, that the ridership would drop off significantly during the summer. It dropped off a little, but only to 7,000 a day. We are now, this fall, up to over 14,000 a day. Now, that probably means there's something around 10,000 automobiles that are not on the roads in Orem and Provo because of UV, the UVX system. So we're really pleased with that result. As a result of that success, we are beginning a study to turn State Street into something similar to a BRT system, from the Provo Station to the Lehigh Station, a frontrunner. And we're looking forward to that study. That study is just getting started. And we're, we're looking at the possibility of increasing that kind of ridership. One of the other things that we're looking at, we currently have some limited bus service that come through your city. But we're looking at seeing what we might be able to do in terms of getting a bus route, call it a number, I think it's 821 that runs through the city, whatever it's called, whatever number it is. We would break that into two because it goes from Payson to Spanish Fork through Springville to Provo. What we would do is have one bus route serve the South Provo-Springville area and another bus serving Payson and Spanish Fork. So once it left Spanish Fork, it would go immediately to this, to the frontrunner station in Provo. So it'd be a little more direct service. We're looking at that as a possibility. We're not going to institute it immediately, but we're looking at it in terms of ridership and trying to figure out how to fund that kind of an effort. So that's some of the things we're doing. But more importantly for Spanish Fork, we have just started the, the process of evaluating what we call some alternate analysis, alternative analysis, to take a look at what we might do with frontrunner or some expanded transit service coming through Spanish Fork all the way to Payson. And so we're, we're now very actively looking at that process. And what we, what we are going to do, once we get some parameters of the study in mind, we're going to come to each of the cities and ask them to have some representative, whether it be a technical representative or somebody, some elected official, to sit on with us to think about the process of moving a, a more active transit system through your city. We would want to identify, for example, a place for a station, the possibility of a transit oriented development around that station that would feed ridership, whether that be in the short term, a bus system to begin with and rail system later, or just exactly how that would go, we don't know. That's what we need to look at. But we are actively beginning to put together that study and we will be soliciting some support from your city so that there's input for proper planning. So that once something is identified, a location is identified as a, as a major station, then perhaps land use planning around that station might be affected by the, by the city. And so we will be working with you in the near future, over the next little while, to get that done. So we will be back to you in the near future. Now, one of the things that we would like to announce a little ahead of time is that next year, we celebrate, UTA celebrates their 50th anniversary. And so we're, we're going to be doing some special things. We're not quite sure what those special things will be, but they will include transit ridership and, and reaching out to all of the cities that we service in our area. And that will include, of course, Spanish Fork. So be looking for some information about that. But we really appreciate your participation with us in planning for this expanded transit service through and around Spanish Fork. Do you have any questions or comments for me?
Just get her down here quick.
We're trying to get that done quickly.
We appreciate all the help we can get and appreciate you doing it.
Well, it's a, it's a pleasure to represent you. And I can be found. If you've got questions, let me know. We're, I'm, I'm available to answer your questions. So thank you very much. Mayor, thank you for allowing me to be here tonight.
Thanks for coming, my friend.
Good to see you again.
Good to see you again.
Thank you.
Okay, consent items.
Motion to approve the consent items. Second.
Got a motion by Councilman Gordon, a second by Councilman Mendenhall. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, let's talk about surplus of public property, Spanish Fork Parkway and Highway 6.
So one of the, one of the funding sources for the new fire station that you mentioned earlier, that we'll have the groundbreaking on tomorrow, is this piece of property that's located up on Spanish Fork Parkway and Highway 6. You can kind of see, you may recognize it, our substation is here. I think it's important to, oh Scott, will you just go to the next one for me? Thanks. I think it's important for those viewers at home that see this to get a picture of where this land is located. So right across Highway 6, just south of, of the property that we're, we're putting on the market or proposing, as long as it goes through after the public hearing tonight, is the neighborhood Walmart. So we anticipate, right now, this is actually zoned, if you go on our maps, as a public facility, because this is originally where we're going to build our fire station. But it will, it will be rezoned into a commercial too. That's the plan right now, anyway. So we, one of the requirements we have in order to sell property is we have to list it in a local newspaper at least 14 days before a public hearing, which we've done. We have to have a public hearing and then we can list it the next day. So if, if there's, if there is anyone that's interested, maybe after they see this, will you click to the next slide? Oh, thanks. We've hired a real estate broker, Randy Davenport. There's her contact information so that they can contact her. We currently are, it's, we don't have a list price right now. The appraisal's still being done. That should be done within the next week or so, week or two, and, and we'll have that price there. But if you want to make an offer, feel free, as long as, I mean, I know it has to be approved first through you guys tonight with the public hearing, but any questions on?
We might, after we get done with our public hearing.
Okay, thanks.
Thanks. Since this is a public hearing, I'd entertain a motion to go into public hearing.
All moved. Second.
Got a motion by Councilman Argal, a second by Councilman Scopes. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone that'd like to discuss this? Anyone that'd like to discuss this issue, uh, you're sure welcome to come up and address us. Seeing none, I would entertain a motion to go out of public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion by Councilman Mendenhall, a second by Councilman Gordon. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any questions or comments? If not, do we need a motion on this, then? I'd entertain a motion.
So moved. We approve, uh, the surplus of public property, uh, at Spanish Fork Parkway and Highway 6.
Second.
Got a motion by Councilman Mendenhall, a second by Councilmember Beck. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Passes. All right, our next issue. 2020 Budget Revision Number 1. Kent, come on down.
One month, Kent, one month.
Almost two.
Oh.
Easy, easy.
Thank you. Kent joked to start us off in the right place. The one this morning.
Thank you.
You don't wanna... All right.
Okay, the year we're in right now is FY 2020. This is our first revision. We did have a public hearing with the property tax increase in August. Since August, uh, there's...it's a moving, uh, document as far as the, uh...the budget is, and we need to have some adjustments as we go forward with certain projects and certain items that have happened since August. Um, so I'd like to walk through our current budget. That was approved in August was 105 million. Uh, the new proposed budget increases by 9 million. It, uh, almost 10 million, goes up to 115 million. And I'm gonna walk through what the changes are and what the increases are. It's mainly the projects that we're waiting to see if they're gonna get done or not. There are some of those, and they didn't get done by the end of the year. And so, now that we've...they've rolled over and that we've finished them so far this year, some of the increases is to capture what it costs to finish those projects. There are a couple others of land transactions that, uh, the city's purchased property or going to purchase property, and those are also in here. So, I'm gonna walk through some of those. So, in essence, the budget is 115 million being proposed. Um, the document that you have in front of you is a summary page document of the different types of areas. And, uh, there are mainly, uh, three sections of the pie. One is the general fund, here, 30 million. One is the enterprise funds, 64 million. And then there's some miscellaneous funds for 20 million. Most of the changes that took place are in the enterprise funds and in the miscellaneous funds as far as capital projects. This is a, uh, graphic, uh...or the numbers of that last graph you just saw. So, here's a breaking out of, uh...of the pieces of that pie right here, and the changes in those funds. So, the general fund actually went down 132,000, while the enterprise fund went up 2 and 1/2 million. And the miscellaneous funds, mainly capital projects, changed, uh, about 7 million. And I'm gonna walk through each one of those. So, I'm just giving you a roadmap of discussing where we're going with the, uh...the changes. First off, in the enterprise funds, enterprise funds are mostly made up of utilities. The, uh...our citizens, we serve water, sewer, sewer plant, electric, uh, garbage, storm drain, uh, broadband, and gun club. So, you can see those, uh...those enterprise type funds cost this, uh...cost us about $64,000 to run those types of funds. The electric department had a large increase of almost, uh, over 2 million in their adjustment, and the storm drain and streets have about a, uh, $600,000 change. Uh, that you can see some of the others were, some are up, some are down, uh, on what projects are there. Mainly, in the electric department, uh, there was a purchase of property. We budgeted, uh, over a, uh...a million dollars for it. When it came down to actually purchasing the property, it was, uh, over 2 million. And so, we need to increase, uh, the enterprise for the electric purchase of property, for the expansion of their, uh, operations that they have in the, uh...their pole yard, uh, inventory, and also their offices. Um, also in the streets, um, there was additional costs on extending the Spanish Fork Parkway, and also the roundabout on Fourth North. To finish those two projects, uh, resulted in an increase in those projects of about 600,000. As we now transition to the other piece of the pie as far as the miscellaneous funds, usually, these are listed out in the types of miscellaneous funds there are. But we're gonna talk about this row right here as far as capital projects. Capital projects went from 9 million to 16 million, so up $7 million just in those projects. I'm gonna walk through which projects had the main changes and what they're for. Also, I'm gonna talk about the RAP tax. This is a new fund that we have this year. Uh, the very end of, uh, last year, we started to collect a little bit of money for our RAP tax. And we have estimated now, we, uh...we get an idea of how much we're gonna be receiving in that RAP tax. And so, we're making some adjustments in the, uh, RAP tax account. And I'll, uh...I'll walk through those. So, mainly, I'm gonna talk about these capital projects that are changing. In those funds, there's about nine of those funds, but these are the ones that have changes in it. So, we have a capital projects fund, um, which is called, we call it land purchases. And in that, uh, fund, we had budgeted funds to purchase this church right next door for us, for the building of a new library. And we budgeted, there are funds already in that account or in that fund. We just needed to budget another, a million dollars out because now we're buying that building. And so, it's an extra million. We already had the money budgeted in there, or we had it in the reserves, but we hadn't pulled it out into the expense portion of the budget. And so, we need...we would increase it a mil...almost a million dollars to purchase the building next door, which that transaction has completed. Is that right? The church?
Yeah.
It's closed? Just in the, uh...in the past month. Okay? The airport would be a reduction in their capital projects. Those projects that they have there, um, will not happen, and so, we adjusted, um, that fund down. The golf course project has the remaining amounts that are left in the golf course to finish the landscaping, remodel of the restroom that's there. So, those funds are marked to be used, um, at the very end of that project. The river reclamation, um, is to finish up the trail stuff, uh, and trail work. How many like the trails? Trails? Well, there'll be a new trail that's, will be opening up soon that takes you from the dripping rock up, uh, past the dripping rock. And so, those expenses will finish up, uh, that project, and also, I think, the, uh, Poplar Lane, if that's in that trail part. This last one right here, you can see it's, uh...it's a major project. Um, we're gonna talk a little bit more in detail about that project. Um, I may have Dale and Seth come help me with this, uh, discussion. But there is a opportunity for the city to get an all abilities park, and we are going to budget that park out of a capital projects. And so, what this does, it creates an additional one, or 5 and 1/2 million dollars to be in that process, uh, to start budgeting that expense. Um, I'm gonna talk a little bit more about that in just a minute. Uh, let's do it now. So, this is, uh...this is the details of the capital projects fund called Parks Construction. Excuse me. There are two projects inside this fund of capital projects. One is called the Rocky Mountain Power Line Park, or Rocket, uh, Corridor Park, or I'm not sure if it has a full name yet. Um, but it's in the, uh, Legacy Park subdivision. It, uh...it's a section of property that is underneath the large, major transmission lines, um, anticipating the construction. Um, there's already funding. We, uh...you already approved a million dollars for that to be spent, and those funds have been, uh, contributed from the developer. And so, that process and park is in the works, and it's already funded. That was already in the budget. The all abilities park is also gonna be budgeted in this. The question that comes to the council now is some discussion on how we're gonna fund the 5 and 1/2 million dollar, um, project. And so, if you can see here in the miscellaneous item, there's $3 million. That amount has been donated as a contribution from one of our citizens towards this project, which is, uh, grateful for the city for that donation. Um, but that's only a portion of the needed money to develop this type of park. And so, the rest of the, uh...of the contribution is, uh, discussion on using some of the RAP tax funds that have been developed, that have been collected or started to be done, and also a possibility of a loan from the electric department as far as, uh, offering, or entering, entering, entering into a promissory note from the capital projects fund, or from the city, to the electric department to borrow money from the electric department and being paid back in the future point with interest charge as if we were getting a loan, uh, uh, from an outside source. So, with that, um, I guess, when you want, are ready to discuss, uh, uh...after the public comment or the council, could decide possibilities of where to find this funding in order to do this all abilities park. There are some, uh, conditions that were established with the donation, and those that need to be considered as far as the process of where we're gonna go with where the park is, um, what the money, the $3 million can, uh...can and will be spent on, and a deadline of when the project needs to be done by. So, those are some, uh...some characteristics of that project. Um, I'm gonna buzz through the rest of it, knowing that we probably might come back to this part as, uh...as some further discussion, okay? Um, this is a summary of the RAP tax. So, when we first started, um, this budget, we anticipating, not knowing exactly how much we're gonna get, because the RAP tax is not charged on food. And so, we have to, we're estimating how much that food would, um, impact the RAP tax, and the non-food would impact the RAP tax. And at this point, we're gonna increase the amount of the RAP tax that we're budgeting by $150,000. And so, we think that we're gonna get about 650,000 in a year. Um, last year, in June, uh, May and June, we got some money in the RAP tax, but we didn't have this fund developed or created. And so, that 53,000, we just put into the general fund. What this is gonna do, now we're into the new fiscal year, is to transfer that money out of the general fund into this fund and let it be reserved for uses just for the RAP tax. And so, it is RAP tax money now being placed inside this fund. And so, we're taking what we think we're gonna get this year, and what we did get in the, uh...in the month and a half, uh, in the startup section in, uh...in May and June of what we got. And so, we're getting about 50,000 a month, um, 50 to 60, depends on what it is on, uh... because it's driven on sales tax.
Can you clarify, when you say not on food, it's grocery, food, right?
It's food ingredients. Yeah, restaurants will pay it, but if you went to the, uh...to Macy's or Walmart, and you bought flour, it wouldn't be charged on flour.
I just wanna make sure that people knew that, as people are eating in our restaurants, that food, yes.
Food, it's called, actually, the definition is food ingredients.
Okay.
So, if you bought a broom and a loaf of bread, you'd pay it on the loaf of bread, but you wouldn't pay it on the broom. So, if you look at your receipt when you go to the store, there's, uh...uh, two different taxes on your receipt. And one is everything you bought that is a food ingredient, and everything you bought that wasn't a food ingredient. That's the difference, okay? So, this is increasing 200,000 as far as that reasoning and the other reasoning of moving the money forward from last year. Okay?
Where, uh...so, we have some projects already approved.
Yes. Right now, you have approved, last year, at the start of the year, there was, uh, applications that was submitted, and $79,000 was approved, which is being used right now, as we speak, on different projects that were approved in all, lots of different arcs, things. Dale can probably give you the detail of what each one of those are, but...
But that's not part of this fund? Should that not be here?
Yeah, this is the revenue side.
Okay.
So... So, this is just the revenue side. On the expense side, it'll show 79,000 that's been approved to be expended. The rest of it is going into the reserve of the RAP tax, in...into this reserve account. So, it saves its identity, saves it for a future, a future year and a future use. That's the purpose, I'm, uh...why we're moving this 53. We want to have it, have some, uh, identity, that it's not lost inside the general fund, okay? Um, stepping back with the general fund, this is a summary of all the departments. The general fund provides a lot of service, with, uh, 30 million dollars worth of service. This is the expenses for each of the, uh...of those. You can see the police department, you see the, um, engineering, airport, fire, police, um, parks, cemetery, library, all of these are funded out of the general fund. And with some adjustments in here on how the, uh...those projects are going, some got, uh, mostly done last year, some, uh, adjustments in those projects. Actually, the, uh...the general fund budget is declining by 132,000. So, in the end, as we talk about these funds, um, the enterprise fund went down, the enterprise, or the general fund went down, enterprise went up, mostly because of the land purchase for the, uh...the shops, and, um, some street work. And the enter...the miscellaneous ones is mostly the all abilities park and a couple other park expenses, and the golf course to round out to almost a $10 million increase in the budget that you're going to approve after the public hearing, or not approve. And so, in the end, this is the budget amount of 115 million dollars as far as what the, uh...this budget revision is. Okay? And I think that's it. And so, I'll let the public comment, and then if you have any questions on the all abilities park, I'm sure Dale and Seth and I can ask, answer those.
Thank you.
Motion to go into public hearing.
Second.
Got a motion by Councilman Gordon, a second by Councilman Mendenhall. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We are now in public hearing. Anyone that'd like to come up and talk about the budget? Or anything that's in the budget? Say your name.
Shane Marshall. Um, just one quick question, if you could go back to maybe this sheet, the summary of it. The expenditures make sense. You have more things to spend your money on. You're going to spend it somewhere. From the revenue perspective, they're identical. How does the city come up with the exact same number on the revenue side as the expenditure side? Where's the money that, where's the 10 million coming from? It's not very clear in these documents as where that might be coming from.
Right. We'll hold that question, and we'll answer it after, uh... Good. Kent, you've got that down? Perfect. Anyone else like to come up? Seeing none, I'd entertain a motion to go out of public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion by Councilman Gordon, a second by Councilmember Beck. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Kent, will you come up and address that?
So, um, for public utilities, we try to maintain a certain amount of cash reserves for each one of those utilities. And so, it's balanced out because some of those are drawing money in to reserves, if there's a surplus, and some of it, uh, as, uh...as projects are done, it's pulling money out of the reserves of those, uh...those accounts. Um, the miscellaneous ones is transfers. The miscellaneous ones, the capital projects, those are transfers from, um... In fact, we'll probably back up to that, give you an example of this one. You can see how there's transfers in from the general fund, um, up here, the million dollars. And that's, or transfer from, um, their own fund balance and the savings. So, to answer his question, um, they're funded by their own reserves or from general fund. Um, we don't just create money. We're not like the federal government that just makes up money. So, it has to come from somewhere. And for this one, whoop, for the all abilities one, there is, uh...there isn't enough money in the general fund to just say, okay, the general fund's going to pay it. That's why the discussion's... That's why the discussion's going to happen today, to make up the difference for this fund, where they're a loan from the electric. The electric has a large reserve, it's, our electric rates are low, but our system is a pretty sound system, so it has some profits. The electric fund has been used in the past to build the swimming pool, to build the fairgrounds arena, new arena parts, different things like that as far as capital projects things, the electric fund has in the past been used to do that. But individually, they're all balanced because they're using their own reserves that have been built up in prior years. Some years, you add money into the reserves, other years, you pull money out of those reserves.
To be clear, three million dollars of this seven million dollar change that ends up coming down to the bottom line of nine point eight million dollars is outside the city.
It's new money that comes in from that, okay? I hope that answers.
Can I answer your question?
I think it's a great question, and if you, when you get into the detail of the budget, you'll see, generally speaking, the utilities are putting some money into the reserves of that utility fund, and generally, we're decreasing what that is, and sometimes we're pulling from the reserves to balance that account, depending on which, which fund and the circumstances of that fund. So as Kent said, it is just coming from the water utility or from the electric or the sewer utility in general. In the case of the general fund, with what we have put together in this revision, we're actually decreasing how much we're pulling from the general fund balance. So at the beginning of the fiscal year, with the budget that we put together and carryovers and things that we estimated, there was a beginning fund balance amount of one point eight, something like that, one point eight million, one point five, or you're just guessing like me? We're close.
I was just going to give you one.
Yeah. And in this budget, it's going, well, you probably have it in that document, I left mine back there. And it's going down to one point three, and so that, we use the, we use, in essence, the beginning fund balance is kind of the balancing act for these revisions as we go through. So no rate changes, no increases or decreases in those things, but we're using that beginning fund balance as kind of that balancing point. Does that answer your question?
Almost.
Okay. What am I missing?
Come up here though, so we can hear you.
Here, well, just because I said, come on up.
Stacy invited you up, then.
All right.
That I get, so on this longer sheet, it does show there's a, there's a fund balance transfer.
Yeah, two point two, that's.
So if you're going to use, if the electrical fund has a balance in it, should you not show what that balance is, so you can make a more informed decision about what is coming out, what is left?
In the reserve.
In the reserve.
Yeah, great question, or great point. We don't typically have those reserve amounts in the budget document itself, but we can, we can get those and make them available. The utilities, all but one, have a reserve balance that for the most part covers their six-month operation, with the exception of one utility, our streets and storm drain utility doesn't have that amount. So there, but, so yeah, there, we don't have that number, I can pull out for you, but we do have that, we can get that. Kent and Dale, council, I'd like to visit with you a little bit about the All Abilities Park and some thoughts and ideas. We aren't, at this point, ready to really fully discuss what the All Abilities Park is, but sometimes due to the timing and processing and things, we have to be a little bit ahead of ourselves. But we've received a, what we might call a priority adjusting donation. That gives us the ability to construct an All Abilities Park a lot sooner than anybody ever thought we could. And so with that, we have a few organizing and ordering things that we need to do, but the donation is such that you can't really look the other way and say, no thanks. To the contrary, it brings tears to your eyes as you consider the opportunity that we now have. But we need to identify sources of revenue to help build, additional sources to build the park and potentially land whereon the park could sit. We have the ability to fund, with the donation included, about five and a half million, or five million dollars of park construction, which will be a fantastic All Abilities Park. But we have land locations that we have considered, some which we own and some which we don't, and we'll discuss those in closed session because nothing is secured and we need to be able to protect the ability to negotiate. But worst-case scenario, we believe that the land could cost up to two million dollars, which would give us about ten additional acres where we could build a park that would be located in an area of town that would be a good place where we do need park space, and it would have good community access as well as even some regional access. And so one of the challenges to identify how we fund this is we need some money today that we can buy the ground with, and one resource is to use money from the reserves of the electric fund. And because we would do it, we, as we talk about it, there are a few ways we can take money from the electric reserves, one of which is a transfer, and we do, we do some transfers every year through the budget process, and it require, a transfer requires certain notice procedures, which include a bill, a notice sent to every customer saying this is an amount that's being considered for a transfer, there'll be a public hearing on this date, and then a second notice that goes out after that public hearing, if a decision is made to transfer those funds, that says, we held a hearing and this is what we did do. That's if we're going to do a transfer which has no kind of payback included. But if we do a loan from the electric fund, then we can, you can take money from this fund, put it in this other fund, and then with a promissory notice, Mr. Clark explained, which includes some interest payments, we can then pay ourselves back with some interest amount over time. And that, you have the ability to move funds from one to another, as long as there is a repayment clause in there. You don't have to have that same kind of noticing provision and stuff because you aren't taking money from one fund to the other and then keeping it there. You're, you're using it for a time and then putting it back. So we would recommend that we consider using up to two million dollars from the electric fund with the provision to pay it back to help us acquire some additional land to build this All Abilities Park. Some of the other sources, as Mr. Clark outlined, would be for the All Abilities Park, the donation, some RAP tax funds that over two years, we would propose you consider using one million dollars, five hundred thousand dollars from this fiscal year, five hundred thousand dollars from next fiscal year, as well as a million dollars worth of impact fee money from next year's budget, and that would get us to five million dollars for the construction of that park.
So with the RAP tax fund, what's that going to do to it? So next year, when we send out applications, again, are we going to be in the negative?
No, great question, so.
He said five hundred and fifty-three thousand, so if we take five hundred out of it?
So in the RAP tax fund, at the moment, we estimate that we'll get six hundred and fifty thousand dollars. We estimated five hundred thousand, but we were low right from the beginning in our estimates, which is good. We try to be low, conservative on the revenue side, we try to be high on the expense side so that we're more conservative, but we can already see that we're low, and so we're recognizing that already. But with what we have estimated to be in the RAP tax fund, there will be seven hundred, about seven hundred thousand dollars in the fund by the end of this fiscal year that we're currently in. We have pledged through the approval process some all around eighty thousand dollars, so if we have seven hundred, we have eighty thousand dollars that we're using for RAP tax, or RAP projects, that leaves us with six hundred and twenty thousand roughly in that fund at the end of this fiscal year.
Starts over again next year.
And then next year, there would be an additional six hundred and fifty plus some growth that would go into that. So you'd have, if my math, five hundred, you'd have a hundred and twenty starting, and then you'd have an additional six hundred and fifty, and we'd say put another, what I said was take another half a million, and that would leave you with two or three hundred thousand, I'm doing too much math in my head at the moment, but however that number ends up being, you'd have still a couple hundred thousand dollars to use for RAP, other RAP projects.
Okay. But you said we'd have seven hundred and fifty by the end of the year? That doesn't add up at fifty thousand dollars.
Seven hundred at the end of the year. This fifty-three came from the month of June, which is in last year's fiscal budget.
Okay.
So that was, that was revenues in April, May, and June that the state tax collections, state tax, whatever they are, commission, not collection, thank you. The tax commission sent before our fiscal year.
Okay.
And we are putting that into this fund, and then this is what we estimate that we'll receive in this fiscal year.
Sure, okay.
So the six fifty plus the fifty-three adds up to that amount there.
Okay.
Now, this is not a project that the RAP committee reviewed, and conversing with Dale, we think it is certainly worth the time, getting some feedback from them, is to, we now have this priority-changing donation, RAP tax funds were discussed in, I know, the community debates and discussions for an All Abilities Park, and so I don't think it should be a surprise if there is that being considered, but I think it'd be great for Dale to have that conversation with that committee, too.
That was going to be my next question, because that's what we.
Absolutely. I think it's a.
That's what we got them for.
And we aren't, we won't spend any of these funds for several months anyway, so that side, we have time. The priority actually at the moment is to, one, acquire the site and then begin to plan for that.
Get going.
Yeah. And we cannot use the donation to acquire land. That was one of the requirements that Mr. Clark alluded to.
Sitting on the, as a non-voting member on that RAP tax committee, I think I can speak at will with Dale's head nodding to me that that RAP tax committee had an All Abilities Park at the top of their list, knowing that the funds collecting, you know, that we projected to collect would take years and years over time to accrue enough to even sniff what an All Abilities Park would be. But now you have a benefactor putting a three million dollar check into it, all of a sudden changes that aspect. So I'm not going to speak for them at all, but I will tell you, in those meetings we've had over and over again with them, that was definitely the top of their list, they just knew it was a long-term rather than a short-term. That's flipped now.
Yeah, great.
I have a question. I'm assuming this is a really good, like feel-good thing in All Abilities Park, and I'm assuming there's going to be a lot of businesses or families that would want to donate to this. Now that the word's out and we're kind of in a time crunch, we're hoping to get this done within a year or less, where could they donate? Who would they talk to? Would that be us? Would that be you?
I think, great question. Best answer I can give for you right now is, any answer I give you right now is premature.
Okay.
So wait. I think getting a little bit more detail, as the donation was given just so recently, and we don't know exactly where it's going to be and exactly the elements or theme that it might have, we'd be premature, but this is going to ramp up very quickly in speed and will do a lot, and there will be a lot more public interaction than anything we've done to this moment. And I'm not meaning to be veiled in any way, but we just, there are so many pieces that we have yet to put together before we really have a great, great story to tell, but that will be in a short order.
That's good to know.
So, yeah, I think, I think there is a tremendous community element that people will want to be involved in this in a number of ways, from, from the design to the implementation of it. So maybe a council meeting or two down the road will have, will have a better, a better bit, well, we have to do a lot more because this is huge and we'll do a lot more of it. Like I said, because of our public nature where we have to budget funds, we kind of have to talk about it sometimes before we're ready. This isn't how corporate America would do it, but we aren't corporate America, we get to do things a little bit more publicly, right? So that's.
Okay, thank you.
We're a little bit weird. So those are our recommendations as staff, we've been around and around it, we feel like that's a good approach, it gives us the ability to do some things today, and then we can, it gives us the ability to pay it back as well to the, to the electric fund. It's not the only way to skin the cat, but we feel like it is, well, it is our recommendation. And certainly, if you have any questions or thoughts anymore about it, we can talk.
Any questions? Okay. If not, I'd entertain a motion.
I move that we approve the fiscal year 2020 budget revision, number one.
Second.
A motion by Councilmember Beck, a second by Councilman Argal. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, new business, Fire Station 62, guaranteed maximum price, Westland Construction.
So as, as we've talked about a few times tonight, the fire station groundbreaking will take place tomorrow night, which means, or tomorrow afternoon at noon, sorry.
High noon.
Which means construction will commence the next day. So before you and Scott, if you don't mind pulling this up so the public can see, you'll have the guaranteed maximum price for the construction of the fire station. So Westland Construction has been on board now since about April of this year and working with our committee, which includes our architects and several staff members, and we reviewed the bids yesterday of the subcontractors that contributed to Westland's bid here. Jared Johnson, our engineering division manager is here with us tonight, as well as Nick Sly from Westland Construction. We're grateful that he took some time to come, come out tonight in case, in case you had any, any questions about this. The good thing about a guaranteed maximum price, the approach we've taken on this is different from projects we've, we've had in the past, because we've decided to go with a CMGC, which means that we shouldn't have change orders unless we as a city say, hey, we need to make a major addition to this building or something like that, which we don't foresee as we've gone through extensive feasibility studies and spent a lot of time on making sure that the building's the right size and. Any questions for, for Nick or for me or for Jared? Any?
Anybody have any questions?
Builder question, but mayor, fire suppression in a fire station?
Hey, it's a building.
Fire trucks in the fire station that can put out the fire? It could save you forty-four thousand dollars right now, Tyler.
Hey, as we found out over the last couple of weeks, there fires can start on buildings, even ones that we don't even think will happen.
That is a good point. That is a good point, man.
So as long as Seth's around, you never know.
Well, this is live. What?
All right, any other questions? Good, we're looking forward to the groundbreaking tomorrow, this will be a great asset.
Thank you.
So, so we need to, do we need to approve that, junior? Or is that?
I'll make a motion to approve the Fire Station 62 guaranteed maximum price contract with Westland Construction.
Second.
A motion by Councilman Gordon, a second by Councilman Argal. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
You got job security for another year.
Thank you guys, appreciate it.
Thanks, Nick. Okay, discussion. Business operating without a business license that never happens.
It's not something that I feel extremely comfortable talking about in public, but at the same time, it's a fairly public issue, so here I am. There is a property on the northeast corner of First South and First East. I think all of you will remember, I think it was just about four years ago that the city was approached to change the zoning of a home located on this corner, just across from City Park, from the residential zone that it was in to a zone that would allow for that property to be used commercially as an office. And we went through a process that we would typically go through. As we went through the process to bring the proposal to change the zoning to the city council, the property owner did what most people do, which is just kind of our standard operating procedure, where we ask people to show us what it is, that ultimately the property would be and how it would be used, what improvements would be made and so forth, how improvements could be made so that if the use changed, it would conform to the city's requirements, and the applicant did that. In fact, they gave us two different plans that showed how the property could be improved to meet the city's parking requirement, for example. Oftentimes, when we talk about existing homes being converted from that residential use to being used as an office, which incidentally is something that we've seen happen probably half a dozen times in the last few years, the biggest challenge is providing off. Um, the biggest challenge is providing off-street parking. A lot of properties simply aren't configured such with a house located on the property to really allow for the development of a parking lot and access to that parking lot and those types of things. In this particular case, I think, uh, there was general consensus, however, that the property could be improved so that it could be used as professional office space. I don't remember there being a lot of, uh, concern raised as we went through the public hearings with the planning commission and the city council. There were some neighbors, however, that I do remember that came and spoke about. And I, and as I recall it and as I've looked through the minutes, a fair amount of the discussion that happened really did revolve around the improvements that would be made and how those would or would not impact neighbors. Um, I mentioned that there were two plans submitted. This is the one that just based on what I'm gleaming from the minutes of the city council's discussion, when the zone change was approved, this was the preferred option where there would be a parking lot developed north of the existing home. Again, this is the corner of one hundred east and one hundred south. There were some other improvements that were identified on the site plan that the applicant provided that showed, again, just simply how it would meet the city's requirements. And it got approved and frankly, I kinda forgot about it. We didn't hear anything of the project, the property, how it was being used or anything like that until May of this year when, I can't remember which of you it was that forwarded a complaint that you had received onto our office about a business that was operating there. And, uh, the concern simply had to do with why the city hadn't required the improvements to be there, the improvements that we talked about when we went through the public hearing process. So this is where I'm gonna try to just really get to the end. So we started what we typically do, which is phone call to the property owner to ask what had happened, what's going on, you know, is there really a business operating there? Um, we didn't get much of a response that way, so we did what in this day and age is probably worse. We sent him a letter. Um, that didn't work so well, so we spent a few weeks kind of fumbling around, like sometimes we do, to try to get a conversation started. And eventually by contacting the business, we were able to, to get in touch with the property owner and had some dialogue. And, and again, this is where I'm gonna leave some things out. But in short, we've, I think really just kind of been monkeying around with the property owner for the past several months. There've been some, there has been correspondence that has suggested that they would make the required improvements, that they'd submit, for example, some construction plans and things like that so that we could, we could get that process going. And to date, we haven't seen anything, in my opinion, that's real, that's happened. And this is front of my mind once again. We've had, uh, concerns raised again by the neighbors that, you know, now it's almost six months after they, they initially raised the concern with us and they haven't seen anything happen. I'm not here necessarily at all with a recommendation or a thought, but I'd love to get your thoughts on how to proceed. I can maybe throw out a couple of suggestions on things that we can do. But this is unique for us. We do have businesses in the community that are operating without a license and we work with them daily, if not daily, weekly with some business to get things like that resolved. But having the property change use the way that this one did, you know, really with the absolute approval and consent of the city, you know, relative to the zoning. But where the property owners failed, uh, to make the improvements that are represented on plans that they prepared, I'm sorry, that they paid an engineering firm to prepare and, and that were submitted, I think that's a fairly, uh, significant indication that they were committed to do the things that are required. Um, now, here we are. And I'll mention this as well, that, and there's a business operating in the community that frankly, I think is a great fit for the site. So we don't necessarily want to adversely impact how they're operating or how they're a member of the business community, but they're kind of right in the middle of this as well. We have not issued a business license for them because we don't do that when businesses are operating in sites that don't meet the city's requirements. So a little bit of a conundrum. Uh, the city manager and I talked about this a little bit yesterday. He suggested that we have some dialogue with you. I appreciate that suggestion. I don't mean to throw it at your feet, really without any more, uh, by way of a recommendation on how to proceed, but we'd love to just have your thoughts on.
As the council member over, over the chamber, I would probably just say that we've been to a number of ribbon cuttings over the last few weeks and, and every one of those individuals applied for a business license. They went through a lot of, I'm thinking of a custom gun shop, I'm thinking of a salon, you know? And they were in your office and they made improvements to buildings. They did things, um, in correspondence with our ordinances and, and laws. And so unfortunately, th- th- this business owner is in, in the middle of that. But I gotta imagine that, uh, the amount of improvements, the parking, the off-street parking, the asphalt, the things that we've seen on in the original plan, uh, for the Ludlow's is probably going to be rather expensive and they're, um, I, I'm in favor of finding a way to bring them to the table. And I'm sympathetic to the business owner. However, um, uh, we've done things in the past, as you, as well as you know. Um, I was here when we approved this, but with, with other situations, we've, we've gone to extremes as to, um, where you're a utility provider. Um, I'm thinking of someone on the north end of town, that, that was a real extreme threat, right? Or other ways to get there. But those are some swirling thoughts that I have.
What, what is the business, sorry?
Uh, as I understood it, stand it largely, I would describe it as a, as a office for a business that uses the property as a photo studio for an online, uh, presence that they have. Um, it's been a few months since I, I looked at their website.
So is there not traffic coming to the place?
There is some, yes. I, we haven't made any effort to quantify that or anything like that. Um, I'll mention this to consider and I don't necessarily think this should be a decision driver, but with the conversion to an office use, um, there's nothing to say that that use won't change, you know, in six months or a year. And even though the, the need for parking onsite today might be pretty minimal, it certainly could grow and, and be a bigger issue than it is today. Um, and we might be able to, to address that. You know, if we could reach some kind of understanding with the property owner, you know, the idea that, uh, you know, some future change to how the property's being used might, uh, bring to bear the need to make some additional level of improvements or something like that, but.
Are they living there or just strictly a business?
I don't believe anyone is living there. Back in May, John Little, the city's building official, I take that back. It was, uh, just after the Fourth of July. John Little, the city's building official inspected the property with the property owner. He has a good feel and we've talked about it. I think the majority of the building's being used as part of this business. Some of it's the storage and that type of a thing.
I guess the reason I'm asking is because in the last year, some of this business and home business has changed for us in the city. Where we, the home businesses is, we don't license them, however, we wanna keep track. But I guess the issue is the parking and that's probably, I think I seen the letter, that's the issue that the neighbors are concerned with is the parking, right? That's not being addressed.
Right.
That was promised and a wall, fence.
You know, to get our approval, they showed us a, a plan, what they were gonna do. So obviously they haven't done what they said they were gonna do. So, yeah, I'm sympathetic too for the businesses that are in there, but still, you know, we've gotta enforce what we've asked them to do. And, uh, you know, even if we give them a timeframe, say, at least show something that you're doing. If you're not doing it, then, you know, we've gotta have, they'll just keep kicking the can down the road and, because they've gone this long without doing anything. So, uh, we need to have a solid timeframe and date and a goal when there's gotta be substantial, um, improvement to that lot. At least that's my feeling.
If, if this were a residence, would there be a bill of occupancy? Or would one have been given?
Uh, no. And as a business, we have not, in fact, changed the occupancy of the building so that it can be used as a business. That's something that still would need to happen.
Right.
I don't believe the improvements that need to be made to the interior of the structure are extensive, but there are improvements that need to be made to the interior of the structure yet.
Right.
As part of that conversion, um, I think occupancy is the phrase that's used in the building code. As you go from residential occupancy to an office occupancy. So, um, I wanna actually answer your question, question clearly though. No, we wouldn't until the required improvements are made.
Right. And so I, my, my thought is being that this is, this is a, this is a spot zone in a residential district. Um, I, unfortunately, I was out of the country when this came about and so I wasn't here for that vote. Um, so it, it was unanimous for those that were present. Um, but nonetheless, i- if, if this were a resident and it is in a residential area despite its, its zoning and someone couldn't move into it, I, though I agree with the mayor that, you know, that something, that they said they would do something for it to be zoned and it was zoned and they didn't do anything, I do differ from the mayor though. My thought is, i- it can't be show us some type of improvement. There should be a date of you have thirty days, sixty days, whatever it would take for contracting to lay asphalt. If that's a, a seventeen day project to lay asphalt or cement or whatever, then, you know, we get with engineering, find out what a reasonable time is and say, that's it. Only because it's been an extended period of time and like the mayor said, they said, we will do this if. And so I, I don't, I don't quite like the, you know, the conditional, the fact that they are now non-conforming and oh, by the way, knowing they're non-conforming said, oh yes, we will accept rent money from whatever business that comes in. I, I am sympathetic to the business that's in there because they don't know, they didn't know, wouldn't know these issues. But as far as the landowners, um, I, I don't have a sympathy because anyone building a house couldn't move into it. They would still be living at the in-laws or an apartment or motel six, whatever, until this was finished. And so an exception for a business like this, especially with, and I've heard from a number of the, the neighbors, um, they weren't too keen on the presentation when it was given initially and some of the verbiage that was used on their neighborhood and how this would improve the neighborhood.
That's right.
Um, this, the landowners here, um, had some comments that talked about the blight of the neighborhood and how the neighborhood is in decline and, and is not very good and that this would improve it. And yet they have fallen into the same adjectives that they use to describe the neighborhood, which I find rather distressing. So I, I am not sympathetic. They've had ample time to do what they said they would do. They told the mayor and, and the other members of the council that we're here for that meeting, that's what they would do and they haven't done it. And so I, I'm in favor of whatever sanctions necessary to make sure that they either comply or it be rezoned residential and they lose, you know, they lose that if, if that's an option.
It's going to be a minute before they get any improvements done. We just saw what's happening to our fire station as a result of increased labor costs. And I mean, if it's asphalt, that product's not gonna get down until the spring of next year. So.
Which is honestly, that's part of my concern now, is that we are first day of October. Uh, and frankly, you know, and again, uh, I don't wanna be disparaging, but I feel very, very, uh, um, uh, disappointed that I'm here talking to you guys in this setting about this issue. And I appreciated the way, the way that the mayor put it. Uh, after an applicant approached us about the change, they made a certain commitment. I feel like they made a commitment to the community as well as the council to do certain things. I think we as staff feel an obligation to make sure that those commitments are followed through on. Um, the fact that we're here in October to where realistically, the problem at this point doesn't get solved until the first of March, maybe, or something like that, that's really frustrating. Um, but at the same time, six months goes by really quickly. So getting things done in the meantime that may be concrete evidence of improvement or something like that.
As I recall, they were gonna put a fence up?
There's a wall that's required, yeah.
Did they, they haven't done that?
That hasn't happened.
So what other things have not happened?
Yeah, really, it's a wall and it's parking. So it's a wall, uh, that they showed on the plan and it's off-street parking. Yeah, the line works pretty faint.
But these are intended to give the idea that there are columns there associated with a masonry wall.
But that's not there.
No.
That has not been constructed.
If you look really close, this is a parking lot. See that, Stacy?
Right, I do see it.
Eight parking spaces, one of them being a handicap stall there.
It's hard for me to be empathetic four years later as well. For the record.
Well, I think we've, you know, and like I said, Councilman Gordon said it, it'd be very hard pressed to put a, uh, parking lot in right now. Can put a fence in, you know? Be expensive because they'll have to winterize it. But if they're not gonna do it, uh, then, you know, they've had all this time to do it. So I'm not, I'm not gonna feel bad that they have to pay more money to put a fence in.
We will see other contractors do that throughout the winter.
Exactly.
Not a doubt.
So, yeah, they can build that, uh, and, uh, and they could e- even put down road base on that, that, uh, parking lot in asphalt that next spring. But if, my feeling is they're not gonna do anything, then, yeah, well, let's take the appropriate actions we need to because it, it's not fair to those others that come in and do it right and apply for a, a change and, and get a permit and we make a zone change. And then, uh, you know, it's like there's a thumb on their nose at us and that's not right. It's all the others that are following the law and following this stuff. So there's gotta be some consequences for not doing it.
Is, oh, sorry.
I just, I was gonna ask, is one respect to rectify it, to revert the zone? Can we revert the zone back to the residential?
Is that possible, Junior? What about, uh, um, not supplying power to them or something like that? Is that even a possibility? I'm just looking for.
It's a possibility, yes. We have to change some standards and ordinance, but so we can, we could do it today. We could, we could change it if we do it on the local.
I'm, I'm just looking at some consequence that, hey, if you don't do it here, because that would take away their funding source, uh, what they're getting out of it right now, those, those people. Does, so does that business have a business license operating inside there?
It doesn't. They've made application. We have not issued it.
Okay, they've made application. So they've tried to?
Yes.
Okay, alright.
Incidentally, that happened well after they started operating. Not that that needs to matter, but, yeah.
I'm not, I'm more concerned about the property.
Right now, yeah.
The property owners are, they're the ones, but, you know, they shouldn't continue to profit by having someone paying rent that they haven't taken care of the business like they told us.
I, I don't know if this is, if, if this is legal, what I'm proposing. This is just one of those where you kinda think, at least to me, this is kind of a common sense. Because of the way that the landowner proposed this, this zone change and this development or this redevelopment, I guess, um, that it would benefit the community because again, the community is in blight, uh, my words, although that was the overall, the overall feeling that they had, that they had portrayed. Um, is it legal since, let's say they do spend the money, they put up the masonry wall, um, but simply because of the season, they can't do what they were supposed to have done four years ago, they still, you know, in layman's terms, still get off scot-free for another season. So you now have four and a half years that the neighborhood doesn't have the improvement that this was supposed to be. Is it legal to impose some type of fine or fee where for the period of time that they don't comply with this until we cut off power, revert the zone, things like that, that that money is then put into the park or the neighborhood in improvements in park strips, LED lighting, things like that so that that facility then improves the neighborhood by dollar rather than by, um, existing? Because they haven't done what they were supposed to do?
Maybe.
Again, that's, that's a possibility. We'd have to change our ordinance to do that. We don't have the funding mechanism.
Okay.
Would it be the same, would the same thing as require them to put a bond up?
No, I think that's different. And I think that, so for example, the immediate resolution of this in my mind, we would issue a. of this, in my mind, we would issue a business license. In fact, if somebody came in with identified required improvements and a cost estimate that our people could review and approve and provided a bond, that's a guarantee that those improvements would be made. So, for example, on the seasonal issue with the parking lot, and we do this all the time, uh, because we want to see businesses open and operate in the community. And sometimes there are things that simply can't be done or otherwise it's not pragmatic to do them at a certain point in time. We let people provide some guarantee that they're going to happen and we do things like issue certificates of occupancy and business licenses and life goes on. And that's part of the normal course of development and...
True, but what's, what can't be done because of a season...
Then they give us, they give us basically money.
That's a typical, that's...
That's equal to and maybe just a little bit greater than the cost of making those improvements. We have that, that we then view as an assurance that those improvements would be made. And in my opinion, that, uh, that eliminates the prospect that we're back here in October of 2020 having the same conversation. So, I think that's, that's a very real possibility. I think frankly, in this case, though, it's gonna take some type of unique compulsion to get the applicant, the property owner, to do that. And that's really what I think I'm struggling with the most. I think that, uh, if we have a fault as an organization, it's dealing with issues that maybe have some similarities to this one when they arise. Um, we could talk about this probably for a lot longer. I appreciate the tone and what I'm taking as direction from you, that you want staff to, uh, hold this property owner to the same requirements that we hold other property owners to. Um, you want to make sure that they follow through with what they, they represented would be done and that you want some type of an assurance in place fairly soon. I'll say that those things are going to be done. Um, if it's fair to say that those are our marching orders, we'll take that and we'll run with it and...
Run with it.
Okay. I appreciate that. Thanks.
Okay.
Thanks, Dave.
Thanks, Dave. All right.
I move we go into closed session for reasonably imminent litigation and land transaction.
Got a motion by Councilman Gordon.
Second.
Second by Councilman Menon Hall. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
We are now gonna thank you for everyone that came and enjoyed that
Oh, are you?
...meeting.
Still mapping it.